We thank all of you who have stuck with us, hung in there with us. Go back to the, uh, ready, go back to the beginning of our resolution agenda under old business. Uh, Mr. Street, you'd like to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to end the break here to, on a, on a easier note, I wanted to recognize and thank the Health Department. Uh, they put together a vaccine program for the scare there in Kingsport. And I went over and got my shot. And I was just wanting to brag on Gary Mays and the Health Department for putting that together, and it flowed so smoothly. And, uh, you know, I mean, who knows? It could have, uh, it, it could have a big effect on the, on the people. Uh, and they handled that without a hitch. Uh, I was really impressed.
Thank you, Dan. And, uh, what could have been a disaster was averted by some very quick action on the part of, and this is about the second or third time that they've had to react like that. But I think this was the largest one to Gary. Uh, I, I, something like fifteen hundred people that you vaccinated, and maybe he can give us a number, but, but Dan, thank you for reminding us. Gary, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Street. I appreciate the compliments. I'll make sure to share those with the staff. I'm only the director and, uh, so the employees is one that made it work so well, and I appreciate it so much. But we ended up with just under four thousand, uh, Southern County citizens vaccinated in about four days. And we took, uh, just under three thousand phone calls, phone inquiries, with people worried about, uh, so on, uh, if they were exposed, and so on and so forth. And, uh, so we actually do train for such situations. And, uh, so all that hard work by the employees paid off. So I appreciate it very much.
Gary, thank you again. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next up on our agenda, uh, item number two, Commissioner Hudson, you're recognized on the second and final reading.
This resolution is basically just to require that any pilot, uh, any and every pilot would, has to come before the Board of Commissioners for approval, that the Industrial Development Board does not have the authority to approve it without our involvement. That's basically it.
Commissioner Riker, do you have a question?
Uh, not really a question, a comment on that. Um, you know, this, uh, in one of the committee meetings, I think there was a little more read into this about guidelines and all that and everything. Uh, this is just letting us know, however we need to know, uh, whether it be company A, you know, there, there's ways around not giving us specific information, just so we know about it. Uh, but the caveat, or one thing I do want to say is, um, and I don't know if I want to mention the other commissioner, uh, but we are working towards, um, gathering some information from other entities that have guidelines for the industrial development boards. Uh, 'cause one thing was, like, you know, they, they want, uh, from what we understand, some guidance so that they can help and everything. And so, uh, I don't know if that'll be in a separate resolution or just pack it. We'll figure that out. But that is coming. Um, I mean, this, this, uh, resolution isn't without, uh, some, some teeth and everything. And I think it's a good thing. I mean, it, it would help a lot of things that we're doing. And, and seeing what other localities have on their guidelines for the, uh, Industrial Development Board. So there is some other work to be done behind the scenes on some other parts of this and everything.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? Uh, Mr. Hudson, you, uh, moving on. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Uh, next up, item number three. Mr. Bass, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this resolution, the Budget Committee, uh, heard the resolution. And at the Administering Executive Committee, I was there and presented that resolution as well. And the, uh, those two committees took no action. Uh, they had some questions about how the bonds would be issued, and also some development initiatives that the bond proceeds would be used for. So at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Clay Walker to come to the podium, if we can do that. And he also, he has provided, uh, the plan on how the funds will be used.
Okay. Uh, we'll reach out to you, Clay. Uh, Clay, thank you for hanging, hanging with us tonight, at home, Doc.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it very much. Um, yeah, what we put together for you is just kind of a sampling of what other communities are doing across the state. And just to give a flavor for the competitive nature of product development. And, you know, we, I speak to colleagues across Tennessee every day about what they're trying to do. And it's, um, you know, as the commissioner often says, you can't sell out of an empty wagon. And we, we have some property that's, uh, raw land that we need developed. And what kind of spurred this was successfully obtaining a million dollar grant from the state of Tennessee's Economic Community Development Department to do a thirty-five acre rail site. And the total projects, over four million dollars. I think it's a fact of life in, uh, this area, that we have to spend a little bit more money to prepare our product than maybe in middle and certainly in western Tennessee. Um, so in order to get that match, we started looking at our lack of product across the county. And, uh, there are properties that could be purchased or optioned. We could seek more grants to develop them once they're in our control. And just, just expand our product line in terms of quantity, but more importantly, quality of shovel-ready sites. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, or go into depth of details.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw, you're recognized.
Thank you. Uh, Clay, I, I understand that when you discuss, uh, uh, things with business entities, that there's a lot of discretion in your business that has to be followed, and you don't want to release any information prematurely. So I'm just asking, is there any new development that you could talk about tonight or in the next, within the next few weeks?
Um, some small projects probably in the pipeline right now. And, um, what we're seeing, and, you know, I, I just, I visit with site location consultants. We just, I, I was in Atlanta this week at the MRO Americas, an aerospace show. Uh, we partnered with aerospace, with Tressies Airport, an aerospace park. And, and people are monitoring that development. And, and again, I know I've said it a couple times, but I should say every time in front of you, thank you so much for coming together with other counties and cities and funding that. That's truly our best opportunity at a community change in the back, in terms of, uh, new job attraction. Um, our pipeline isn't, it's never as full as we'd like it. Um, it's, it's kind of at a mediocre, uh, position right now. Part of that problem is, but...
Well, to spare you, I, I was really just referring to this project. There's not...
The, the project on the rail site?
Yeah.
Yes. Then there are, I mean, we're a year away from developing the site. It's got to be done. But we already have seen through just getting the grant interest in, in that for a couple of different possible companies.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Commissioner Riker?
Uh, thank you, Clay, for coming. I know you brought this to the, to the budget meeting last week we were at.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, all I really have to say is, you know, um, I'm not excited about voting for, uh, bonds and increase in the last couple of months right now while we have budget going on. But, uh, you've got to spend money to make money sometimes. Uh, I just appreciate, uh, you know, that we're eight months in, and this is the first time we've ever seen anything, uh, like this. And then there's a lot of new commissioners on board. And I hearken back to, I think it was the very first month, Dwight Keane, back, back here behind me, and if I'm incorrect, Dwight, please tell me wrong, talking about what's the, what's the vision, or what, what's going on for, uh, development? Because there was some land that came up, and he's like, man, that would have been great land to buy at auction, or something like that. I guess. So I, I just think, you know, a little more updating, or, or just, just brief, you know, maybe do that in another meeting. I don't know. Uh, you know, but just, this is nice, and I appreciate it and everything.
Sure. I, I'm happy to come before you anytime. Maybe I should be more proactive in these things.
Yeah, that's all.
But, but, um, uh, maybe just make a point to every quarter coming up, Dave, you'd be happy.
Yeah, 'cause I, I also say this during a, a break. Someone said, you know, while we're three and a half hours into this, you know, but, but we're elected to do our jobs for our constituents. And, and it's been noted, this is the most vocal, uh, commission probably has been in a long time. I think that's a great thing. We, we all take our jobs seriously, and we want to know what's going on and everything. And so I, I just, a little more proactive on this, because this is very nice.
Yeah, I will be. And as one of your constituents, I'd say I agree that I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Brown, you're, you're recognized.
Thank you. We were talking Tuesday night, and something in, in relation to this that I was wondering if you could help us with. And I know you can't tonight, but just something to put on the back burner.
Yeah.
I'd like to have a definition of what regionalism, or what your all's version or idea of regionalism is, because it seems to be coming from the airport. But we don't know if that's one government, every government working in conjunction, one school system, one county. We, we don't know. And trying to hit, you know, we won't go a hundred mile there at this, but we don't know where we're going. We need targets that we can, physical targets that are, we're going to have one nine-one-one system, period. Then we're going to do this. We're going, we need physical targets so we can monitor our progress and figure out where we're at and where we're headed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd actually, I'd like to know that when I read the paper here, conversations do. Because from an economic development standpoint, in my line of work, uh, you know, regionalism is something I've been involved in for the last twenty-five years. Uh, I worked for one organization where I was in charge of marketing for forty-five counties. And that was a region. And, you know, but, um, we work together very well across the state of Tennessee in a region. How I define a region is how our number one partner, the Department of Economic Development, and that's an eight-county region in northeast Tennessee. Uh, others, uh, heard marketed in different ways. And for tourism, it's probably very different than it is for economic development. For nine-one-one system, which I know little and nothing about, I'm sure it's different. I know what I know about. And that's one of the things that makes the target so hard to hit. People have got regionalism from their perspective. They're talking about marketing in the region. Well, you've got to be more specific than that. So I, I, I could talk about...
We can talk later, yeah. Just, just food for thought. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll look at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hudson. You're recognized.
Thank you. I, I don't really have a question for you. I, I do appreciate this, uh, this material pretty much. And I appreciate you being here to answer any questions. I know it's late. Um, but I, I would agree with, with David and others who, just a, a pretty constant update. I did do a little digging and found out at some point in years ago, ago, a resolution was passed that Networks was supposed to come and give us a, really, an update. So I was gonna, actually gonna write a resolution to request that, but one was done.
I, I wasn't aware of that. I've been there five years, the first time I heard that.
Yeah, that was a while back, apparently.
But, but if there is one, there is one. But you don't even want to get me up here and say so. And if you want me to be the one proactively scheduling, tell me how frequent, and that's when I'll be here.
That would be great. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Keane?
Thank you. Um, the partnership, uh, part number one in Blomville.
Yes, sir.
When you look at this, uh, Mountain Creek Road is on the very front, and it turns on to Holly Road. Um, how do we sell that with that road? I mean...
Well, we, we, you know, we haven't. Um, it's, it, you know, not every site's a perfect site. And I'm not going mountain-oriented quarterback sites. I, in fact, if I were looking at it, and I've told the mayor this many times, in my experience, to have a region of a county, of a community, of a region's economic development, you have to buy property. And sometimes it's not perfect property, but it has to be done to take the steps to improve it. And it's easy to look back and say, that's not the best industrial. But if you didn't do A, you wouldn't have done B, and you wouldn't have done C. So that, that's a challenging site. And we thought of different ways to market it, what it could be. And we're working with some smaller firms for smaller pads, because you're not going to get a big pad on that site. So we're just trying to see what we can get so that, you, you know, I want every square inch of our property to produce the maximum amount of jobs we can do. And I think we need to do a little bit more work on that site and, uh, how we market it, how we develop it for small businesses, to look at doing it for larger sites as it normally would.
Where would three fifty-seven fit into this site?
Yeah, I'd have...
I mean, that, that was the original. Con, uh, concept was, we was going to have a four-lane road that ran the back of it.
Yeah. And, and, you know, all I know is what I've heard about that historically, but, but we don't have it. And that's what we deal with every day, what we do have right now. And so I, if it, you know, I mean, obviously, four-lane roads are good, and it makes it a home in Ballgany.
I guess, you know, there's talk about three fifty-seven again. Um, is that something that, that Networks could promote or help push, or, say, we, we've got land that joins this, and we'd like to see it move forward?
We certainly could. It, it, part of our strategic planning session, we prioritize infrastructure projects. Um, that one hasn't been one. I, I think that we could get, I'm not saying would it be. I, we could look at it closer, and always revisit things. In, in light of new day, you might, you know, second-guess yourself. But we have a lot of infrastructure projects that we'd like to see done that I think could have a more immediate impact. But, you know, again, y'all have been here and, and worked on these roads, and worked on developing this county. I, I put a lot more value in what this county and what, than what I could come up with. That's where I do count on y'all's opinions.
The other thing is, that I was looking through this, you've got a lot of these communities and, and sites that, you know, how do we stack up in these different communities? Most of these sites are shovel-ready, ready to go.
Yeah.
And, and then we're, we're saying, we need to do this. What, what this shows to me is, they've already got their sites ready, and they can't get theirs sold. Are, are we want, are we willing to, to put this kind of investment in it and set on shovel-ready land out here with that kind of investment?
Well, for the most part, they do get sold. But mostly, these are recent, fairly recent developments. And within a year or two, you know, they, they've been sold. I mean, uh, one of those communities in there has been leading the way in, in product development and turning and showing. And, um, I think they do get sold. I think you look at, when we've had our ready-to-go buildings and sites, we've sold them in short turnaround. We sold the spec building in Gateway Commerce Park before we ever started putting the skin on the thing. Um, I, I think you look at when we agreed to market and recruit for Phipps Bend Industrial Park, um, we have one big track left. Uh, if we get a shovel-ready site, I think we can do it. The alternative is to not have one and not even have a chance. I mean, I, I think, I think if you look at the model, and I've spoken to them a lot, of communities that have invested in product, serious money, and just they keep turning out projects on that product, is Montgomery County Clarksville. I mean, they're, and they're not waiting until they're out of product to get new product. And, you know, how do, I mean, you know, we, we've lost some projects to communities in the area because their sites were more ready to go than ours.
Well, and if you look at their competition around this Washington County, they're doing it right now. They're, they're in their dust-up part. They're leveling and getting it ready. Then you go to Hawkins County and Phipps Bend. I mean, there's land there available also. So I don't, you know, this, we bought this back, and I voted for it. Uh, two thousand seven, two thousand eight's when we, you know, uh, what's our return on our investment? That's, that's...
Well, again, I'm not going mountain-oriented quarterback, but logically, if you support the purchase of the raw land to let it, to not develop it, isn't finishing the job and it's not being competitive. And if I were standing before you on any piece of property, I would look at purchasing it. And I drive around, I look at the property that's sold at auction after. I mean, we couldn't move that quick. I mean, just public funds you can't. Still might be available, who knows, later down the road. And I drive around property all the time. I was on, driving around on fifty acres today, uh, on the west end of the county, and have promise. But before I look at it, I'm going to look at not only what we're going to buy it for, but then what we're going to have to spend before, let's say, truly marketable site. And that's what we're going to look at. Um, that, that's all I'm going to tell you, is that when we have ready to get market property, we've sold it, and we don't have enough of it. Now, what, you're, you're right about those properties. They've got grants. That the million dollar grant on the rail site, I mean, that's going to be such a marketable site. You need that to get PP two going. Um, but Bristol, uh, Essential Services, BTS, they have a requirement. And we have worked with them to secure grants. And we're getting it ready for a four-hundred-twenty-thousand-foot pad there. And, you know, we've already, before we even are done with the site, we had site visits. And we're looking, BTS is proactively investing in getting an un-siteing park ready for a hundred thousand square foot pad. But that's never enough. And I mean, you, you don't wait till you sell that before you have another one ready to go. And...
Doctor Tomlinson?
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Claywell. Uh, I'll do this very quickly, and that is, I'm always interested in wages, and what kind of wages are coming in here because of all this activity. Uh, and I noticed here on the partnership part three, we have FedEx and Anita Snacks, Lamar advertising. Unless you could tell me, I, I would say FedEx, is it probably your best wage there?
Um, yeah, it is.
But are we considering that too, when we're developing all this? We've got to bring in things that are really bringing good wages, or we're not going to...
We are. And that's one of the things that I've discussed with Dr. Browder on the BTS site. I mean, we, we've gotten, we've talked to consultants about projects, and not only what we desire, but what we can build. And, you know, if you want, we work a lot with site location consultants. And they keep bringing you projects for many reasons, but the number one reason, they trust you. And they keep bringing projects, whether it works out or not. We've told them on occasion that the wages are too low for these projects, and it's really not going to be a good fit for our community, because we have plenty. We have so many open jobs at sixteen-dollar an hour depth. So we're not trying to recruit that. Now, there's a lot that goes into that. And what, what we're seeing, one thing I like, especially, you know, with our low unemployment numbers across the country, technology is really impacting manufacturing tremendously. And what we're seeing is projects with a lot more capital investment and a lot fewer jobs, but they're highly skilled, higher-paying jobs. And that's the trend. And we've been promised that by the experts, choosing being consultants, for the past five to seven years. And it hasn't happened as rapidly as you would like. Though we're starting to see it pick up in that regard. The RNC manufacturing that recruited, again, product, spec building in Phipps Bend, um, you know, that's going to be, when they get that plant going, it's a Canadian company. There are going to be robots, not just in the cages, you see, but roaming around. And, and I love that, because that's going to be also, you know, education and it's part of that, and training, workforce training, feeds getting jobs, getting good jobs, feeds workforce training. That's going to be a plan where you take the school kids and say, this is what manufacturing is today. And in the future, and they're saying, hey, manufacturing might be better than what I thought it was. It's not the dirty, hard, backbreaking work that I thought it was. People programming robots make more money than people who do jobs and are not done by the...
So are we going to see another, a big car place in the future in Southern County, or another Easton Chemical?
An assembly plant? No, we're not going to see an assembly plant.
I didn't think so. What did you say?
Me, because you, you need to have a thousand-acre site shovel-ready. And again, we, you know, I'm driving around today, getting all excited about finding a fifty-acre site that might work. Um, it's just, I love the mountains. I moved up here, I haven't lived in a mountainous area before. And I love them every day. I'm in awe of these mountains. I drive to work and, but doing what we do, there's a price to pay for that. And, and we, it's not an excuse. We just have to learn how to operate within that framework. But that is not conducive to an ascent, an auto level ascent plant. I will say this, there could be a nice aerospace assembly plant at Aerospace Park someday. It's, you know, we look at it for MROs, but it could be that too. It's, it's big enough for that.
Thank you. Uh, any further questions? Claywell is up there.
Could we have two copies of that, please?
Yeah.
One for the record and one for the...
Sure.
And everyone, I need a copy of what you passed down on the...
Uh, in closing on this resolution, uh, I'll probably have to vote next week. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to bring to attention, uh, I know I did in the Budget Committee...
committee, uh, as a partnership in acquiring the debt, uh, it's, the debt is shared between Sullivan County, Kingsport, Bristol and Blood City. We still have to approve the resolution also before the county can actually issue the bonds for the partner network. We're currently on the debt service paying four hundred fourteen thousand. This will increase, uh, by eighty-five thousand dollars. That's our obligation towards the eight million dollar bond. Uh, also, uh, the one million dollar grant that they have received for these railroad spur, uh, it does require some matching funds for that grant for site development, uh, which will be in partnership too on the Weaver Pike. So, uh, so if you have any more questions, Clay can answer it or you can be here next Thursday or y'all can contact him personally to get your answers, uh, of this resolution.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Commissioner. Can I say one other thing? It must've been a long night for everyone, but, uh, Commissioner George had a question last time or brought up about, was it clear that we want to spread this investment throughout the county and if it wasn't properly or, or whether or not it was sufficient to stay in the resolution? I will say this, you rest, I mean, I'm not giving the resolution the way you like it, but what we, what we're asking for and what networks voted on and is my leadership's charge to us, it is very specific to do that. So regardless of this, when, if, if y'all see fit to move us forward and build this product, that's my charge, my leadership already, and it is, it is, I mean, the T's are crossed and I's dotted and we all agree on that. So, uh, for what this was...
Someone had a question, Clay, that the money for partner two, what is the remaining part of the money in the bonds would be used for? And do you have any outstanding projects that you are looking at that works to be used as other proceeds for?
Uh, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay, the bond indebtedness is eight million.
Yes.
Okay, and the spur, you gotta meet our grant.
Yep.
And in here, if I understand this right, um, the spur, the rail spur is supposed to be costing somewhere around four point five million.
Yeah, yes, at very maximum, that, that's our top dollar and that, that's kind of how timing of the previous project. But, you know, we wanna, we wanna come in under on all that because there's more investment to be made in the product. So, we figure that's very most, that that costs us four and a half million or not. And it's, so that leaves us three and a half million. So that, that's coming out of that towards that. That's priority for us in that end of the county. It, it, it starts, I mean, that, that's where it's going. We don't, we haven't identified another project since, say, say we can trim it, let's be real optimistic, and say we, we can get by with a million less than that, I don't know if we can, but a million. We haven't identified earmarked exactly what to do that. We wanna spend it wisely. We, again, how, how I look at this when I dealt with it, in, in my years, is I look at what's gonna be a marketable site for a trend on the type of companies we can recruit, but not the companies they always had, but to recruit to up that wage level. I mean, our job numbers, you know, I've talked to some of y'all in private, and I, I mean, I'll just be blunt, I, I don't pull back, y'all are our partners. You pay me, so I don't wanna whitewash things with you. Our job numbers for this, you look across state and you compare per capita, they've been pretty good. Where I've been disappointed in my five years, to your point, man, we, we have not done what I'd like to do on the wages. So I want to develop sites and that's why we talk to consultants as regularly as we do. We wanna know what's trending, what's going on. And, and I was in, uh, I was in Utah, the site selectors field, and the emphasis on rail sites, uh, four of my meetings with consultants was overwhelming to, you know, we need more rail, we need more rail. And they cautioned us, when you get rail, and we heard this from the state when they're getting this money, don't sell it just to anybody. If it's got rail, try to put a rail issue on it. And that's why we need the other sites, is we don't wanna firm that site on some, and then two months later have somebody needs rail and someone would come over there. That's back to choosing projects wisely. You don't have to go after every project just because it's out there. And what I like about the leadership I felt is I haven't felt that pressure, get, get a project, get a project, any project. That's when economic development starts going bad. Be selective, it's okay. I, I mean, I look, I don't get all cheesy about this, but our citizens are worth, you know, we have to, you know, we have to use judgment and protect them and not just sell it to people who aren't gonna pay wages, aren't gonna use the differentiating infrastructure that we have, because they're not gonna use it, it's fun somewhere else. And if they're not gonna pay, maybe we don't need any more of that, that type of company. That's, that's how, that's how we go about our business every day. And, and you're right, I need you to be back here in front of me more so you guys have a better understanding of those laws. And give me the input whether you think we need to steer in any other direction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Clay, thank you for being here three times and we'll invite you back.
I'll come back a fourth, I'll come back, how many times?
I appreciate the story you tell and, and you've got a good story to tell. Thank you.
Well, thanks to y'all we do, thanks so much.
Okay, that completes our old business. Um, we're on to new business now and if you, um, if you want to weigh the rule on, on your resolution as we talk about it, would you tell us tonight so we can get that prepared for the commission meeting next week? So, Commissioner King, I believe you're up on item number six. Uh... You recognize?
Hi, man.
Now, take your time.
Let's hear some of yours. I'm out.
There we go. I got it, I got it, I got it. I went the wrong way, y'all was going the wrong way. But anyway, this is a resolution to accept an offer for a delinquent tax property located in Kingsport. It's gone through, uh, delinquent, uh, property tax proceedings, uh, I think it was like ten thousand dollars owed, uh, for delinquent taxes. We've had a, uh, a offer for eight thousand dollars to, uh, sell it and, uh, the, uh, we've come, before the delinquent tax committee and they voted unanimously to, uh, carry it, so I would, uh, ask that this would be approved and if we can, we put it on consent calendar.
That's a reasonable request. Uh, any questions for the sponsor? Uh, any objections? Pat?
I thought our rule was we don't, uh, we don't put something on consent calendar that, uh, involves money. Money.
I'm not paying, we're getting money.
We're getting money here, but, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll throw that.
So it's only one way.
I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, Pat, I'm gonna ask him, he turned, he's been here a long time.
Yeah.
I don't remember. Rule either way, myself.
Okay, I, I would throw, just, that's fine.
Very good. Uh, any, uh, any objection to consent? Seeing none, we'll have that on the schedule next week and that will be a extension of rules. Um, next up, item number seven, Commissioner Harkelrod, you're, you're recognized on, uh, item number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution to submit application to set appropriate fines for running the state Tennessee Department of Transportation for the leverage. We do this yearly as long as we're involved in this program and, uh, this went through all the committees, budget committee approved, executive committee and administrative committee. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain some answers, hopefully, but if not, uh, I'd like to go ahead and have this on waiver of rules or on consent agenda.
Uh, any questions for the sponsor? Seeing none, uh, any objection or requests for consent calendar? Seeing none, um, we will, uh, put that on consent calendar next week, business meeting now. I'm gonna, uh, I just noticed we've still got some folks with us, there is another PowerPoint. We, we ran through that, Hunter asked me earlier if we could possibly, uh, move up 'cause we've got several people in the room that, uh, are wanting to speak to you. And without objection, we've got, have a PowerPoint, I believe they want to show you. Uh, without objection, we'll move item fourteen next and, uh, recognize Commissioner Lockham, item, we have any objection to that?
Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Lock, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. This is, on behalf of Sullivan County Jail, uh, got six hundred nineteen inmates and, uh, or holds inmates of a number of six hundred nineteen, it's got currently nine thirty-one. This resolution here is to hire thirty-two employees on behalf of Sullivan County Jail. Those numbers break down from one population manager, one registered nurse, four LPNs, one per shift, four shift sergeants, one per shift, two transportation officers, four unit, one male housing officers, four unit, two female housing officers, four unit, three maximum security housing officers, four extension housing male officers, four booking officers, which is thirty-two employees at one point five mil. Um, and I've got Chief Lee Carswell here, he's got a presentation to present as well for this, if we could have him come up.
We will, just let us see if we've got questions we can answer. Commissioner Claywell, welcome. Uh, we'll, we'll let Pat ask his question and then we can write that.
I'd prefer to sit there.
Very, I, I thought you might. Chief Claywell, you're recognized.
Okay. Uh, thanks for hearing me tonight. I guess you guys knew I would probably eventually arrive over here. Uh, I do appreciate the ones who took the time to come over and tour the jail. I'm sure it was eye-opening, a lot going on over there that, uh, probably most of you didn't know about. Uh, of course, you hate coming over and asking for anything and, uh, I just feel like I got a duty to, uh, to take action, to show you a need that, that we have. And, uh, it's something that didn't, when I first started researching this, that I didn't see right away, you know? A lot of people said, why are you just now bringing up the, the staffing issue? And I'll be honest with you, I, I didn't realize it was so out of the norm until I started touring other counties and looking at other counties. I was wondering why we couldn't complete the task that we were supposed to do. We were struggling to complete just the minimum requirements that we had to do. We're not completing all of them at this point anyway. I hope this PowerPoint, as we go through it, uh, will be helpful to you all. There's a couple of you that I know haven't been over. Like any other tour you might go on, as time goes on, uh, it kind of grows as, as you study it and you look at more issues and more things are revealed, so I guess some of the ones of you that come in at the first end, you get to see all of it, but, uh, you know, if you wanna come back over, that's fine. You might have to show me how to work this.
Yeah. That work?
Uh, one of the first things I noticed, uh, when, when I started looking at our stats versus everybody else's, it was our overtime cost. I mean, it was astronomical and, uh, we're, we're working overtime pretty much just to meet minimum standards right now. Uh, we got a hot, hot staff turnover rate. I contribute most of that to these guys having to work pretty much on most of their off days. Uh, we have a non-call list and it's mandatory. We've gotta meet those seventeen. And I'm hoping I can show you those seventeen and how they're utilized throughout the jail. I can't really go below that at this point. It's a safety issue. It, it really gets me to the point where it's a failure to, uh, protect on my end. And, uh, of course, I'm concerned about the officers and I have to have concern for the inmates too, so it's my responsibility. Uh, but, uh, we're, it's, it's almost constantly, every morning we go in or sometime before we leave, there's some crisis going on, so we pretty much gotta stop and try to figure out how to address. I mean, uh, we have lost lives within the jail, things have happened. The jail, one of the things that I noticed off the bat was the, the way it was designed. Uh, the, the style of jail that we have is very labor intensive and it requires almost double staffing than what you might, uh, find with the new generation style jails, which pretty much all of our neighboring counties have. I know this is nothing new to any of you, I know the, the mayor's been involved with this for a while, but I, I know in twenty, in two thousand seven, when they opened the extension, of course, by two thousand eleven, we were over a hundred percent capacity and it's continued to rise. I think about those numbers in your packet. Uh, those are some of the hours that we're working, that's a two-month, uh, that's January and February right there today, and that's just a two-month, uh, by. Uh, it's also, when you lose these officers, there's a cost to it and we, in twenty seventeen, I mean, this was crazy when I started looking at these numbers. Uh, we hired sixty-five in, uh, forty-one of them either resigned or term, or were terminated for different reasons, uh, and there's a breakdown right there of the training cost that we put into each one of these people as they're hired. So I think attrition has slowed down quite a bit, uh, in the last little bit. We're trying to get morale up, trying to keep, uh, do all we can at this point. Transportation, that was one of the biggest things, glaring, uh, problems that I seen off the bat and, you know, we've got five officers in there and one supervisor, okay? We transport, uh, you know, Sullivan County's kinda unique than most of the country or any of our neighboring counties is we've got three cities with three different court systems. Each one of those court systems got, uh, have, uh, you know, the, the Kingsport and Bristol have two sessions courts, they've got two juvenile courts, they've got, uh, child support courts, and even in some cases, we have to transport inmates in custody that are, have civil matters, pending against, we, we have to do that. At the same time, uh, throughout that week, uh, we have to, uh, transport, we have transport orders that come from the district attorney's office. We go as far, I think we got to go to Maine here next week or the next week. We go to New, we, we've been to New York, uh, we've been all over Florida, but five to six times a week, we'll be in Georgia. Anything east of Mississippi, we go pick up. If it's beyond that, we use the contract services. I can get all these hard numbers for you too, if, if you like. But I guess my biggest thing is, is like Kingsport, you know, when I have to trans, we've had on a couple of days, it's been eighty Kingsport, uh, inmates have to be transported to Kingsport. That takes five of my men right there. But at the same time, Bristol Court's going, so I have to call in. So we average calling in anywhere from two to six people every day. And that right there should be a glaring that we're, it's not properly, properly staffed. And I, you know, why is it just coming out now? I guess it's just never been looked at. People have just responded and worked overtime and done it. But when you have your people working all that overtime, what happens? Uh, they start making mistakes, you know? When I first come in, I, I was probably pretty difficult to work for, I was pushing everybody real hard. And then when I started realizing how many hours we were making, making them work and I thought, I'm shooting myself in the foot, nobody's gonna, you know, you ain't gonna work, uh, you know, you get seven days off and if you're working three of those seven days in a month's period of time, uh, you're not really apt to take a whole lot, you're gonna start looking for another job. I mean, I'm just being transparent right now. And that, that has a lot to do with our turnover rate. Uh, this right here is another thing, with these long linear hallways, I've got, uh, and we'll, we'll go to the housing units, I had them on here, it's hard for two officers as they go down these hall, hallways, and you guys that have come through have already seen that. There's a lot can go on in the back of those cells when those officers are either, either down the hall. We, we depend on cameras, but you all that's been a guard too, know that whoever's working in there have, that there's way more cameras than they could possibly, uh, watch at one time. So there's things that are going on that, that are going undetected and our, our inmate-on-inmate assaults, this is a two-month period too, right here. I mean, they're, they're at, well, that's actually, that was, that's what, we average about thirty, thirty-five a month. Uh, so you can do the math, I, I forget how far I went back. Another thing, uh, when I took over, a lot of the stats weren't being properly kept, so I've had to recreate, or we've had to recreate quite a bit of, of data just to get a, a good finding on where we're at, you know? And that's one thing I can say, we've got some phenomenal people working for us right now, uh, under me. If I didn't have them, I don't know that I would stay real much longer either. They come in, they're pretty dedicated. Uh, but, uh, that's, that's really high, guys. If you start comparing that across the country or anywhere else, the data's there. Like I said, I'm just here to, to basically just tell you all we have this meeting, to show it. I'm obligated, uh, I've been legally advised that I have to obligate or obligated to notify you of that, this meeting, you know? I don't wanna sound like I'm passing my buck, but go ahead, Sam.
In this bottom box, are those, in the bottom box, are those like three, five, six, eight and zero?
Those are...
Those monthly or weekly?
Yeah, and, and we had to put this together pretty quickly. We actually put this together this evening and we did the best we could. I just wanted to kind of give a good overview. Like I said, uh, you know, we took over in September, so it's, you know, we're learning, we're still learning and we're trying to get stuff together, but... But I'm reaching out guys, I'm not, this is not nothing that I've set on, you know, and I've come up with myself. I've reached from one side of the state to the other, even, you know, I went to the conferences, I talked and told everybody where we're at. It's concerning and I hate to bring it to you, I really do. I hate to ask for it.
Lee, do you want to take questions as you go along or?
I, I'd rather, maybe I can answer most of them as we go.
Well, if, and I've got Shell up here and, so if you have a question, if you don't mind to be interrupted, Lee.
Uh, no.
Anybody after, in.
I'd rather see the whole thing.
Your other way, so anybody after time, I will recognize, okay?
I do report to your questions guys, so feel free, feel free. I mean, we're in this together, we're all gonna pay for it one way or the other. But.
Commissioner, just press your button and I'll get you on, okay?
I give you, this is not a snapshot of the last year. I, I can't explain to you at this time, I haven't got that far on why, or, you know, the inmate population keeps going up. I know that I have people every day working with the courts, working with the judges to get these people out. And, you know, we're doing the best we can. It's, it's like we get forty out and there's forty-two come in. And as you see down in February, the main jail, this is how the state, they, they don't consider the two buildings one. So if you look down at February, for that month, we're already at a hundred and seventy-two point eight percent on a monthly average. These are state numbers, these are not our numbers, these are the, the numbers that ever count in. I can get you, I can give you the reports for the whole state for the last year if that's what you want. You can look, see where everybody else is at too. The extension, you know, it's running a hundred and thirty-six point seven. I mean, the numbers are there, I'm not making it up and I'm not embellishing anything. You can fact, find me all you want. This is just pretty much, that's just a, a graph, just kind of showing the, the training up. This is the, the old part of the housing unit, one of the things I wanted to, to show you all. We, we run two officers up there on the, if I had a laser, I could kind of point to it. But on your right there, if you can see, my eyes are not as good as it used to be, there's a, there's a office down there. The two officers, pretty much, that's, that's where their, their logbooks and everything are, that's where they're, they're at with, when they're not doing checks. But that bay up there, those bays, they, they hold sixteen people, sixteen beds is a hundred percent. Every one of them are filled from thirty-three all the way up to fifty-two inmates. Those bays, if, if you walked up there, you know it's hard to, to, you know, if you're not right in front of them, you're not seeing what's going on, okay? But you got two officers, what usually happens is by the time they get around to one side, or if there's something going on that they're feeding, they don't see what's going on on the other side, you know. And these are, most, mostly the people I have have less than six months of experience, you know, in law enforcement. And we're talking about, and another thing, you know, I keep hearing this and I, I do know there's probably people in our jail that we can get out. I just ain't got time to find them all. If y'all want to volunteer, I'll bring, I'll let you look through the files all day. But we don't have, we have some pretty violent offenders. We've got fourteen in there right now, first degree murder charges, thirteen on attempted murder, a hundred and one on aggravated assaults, forty-two on aggravated burglary, thirty-three on robbery, twenty-three rape, sexual battery. And it goes on and on. I, I had my, my staff, I pretty much had to stop them from all their administrative duties today to go through all those files. It took about four hours. So anytime somebody asks me to, to get stuff, I, I did one for the county attorney. And I told them I was more than glad to do it and, but I have to shut everything down. And they're all, you know, I've got people that are, are doing state credits for times that are very, that they have to turn in for the inmates for their good time every month and that's pretty much all day job, getting all those judgments. So, but I've got two officers up there guys and there's three hundred and one, three hundred and ten inmates up there all the time. So for them to do anything right there, they have to, if you all see my, my rough graph that I had over there on the board in the jail, it's a little easier to understand, but I, all that I've got is those two guys. And, and I can't take from anywhere else. But anyway, I'm, I, I was originally gonna ask for two, I guess a lot of you had heard that I'd originally asked for fifty-eight. Guys, I was just being real, but I, I, I didn't want to be the one setting the record for asking for the most people in the state. So I, I did back it off. But that, that one position is gonna go right up there with them. And that gives them, because they can't even go in the cell to break a fight up unless there's one that's standing at the door. Only two can go in, okay? Prior to this too, I'll go ahead and address the supervision, we had a sergeant and lieutenant. If the sergeant was off or the lieutenant was off, that one person on, on nights and weekends, right now, on holidays, was responsible for every person that got released. You all seen those files, sometimes it can take twenty to thirty minutes to figure out if somebody can even get out. And when they got court cases from all over. And then, and then he's got, he's responsible for all the evaluations, time sheets, all that, just like a normal business. But he's up, also all the complaints come in. And granted, there's young officers coming in. So what we did was with our existing budget, we made another supervisor corporal. And we put them down in booking. But right now, you know, I don't even have the supervision that I need on staff. And that's just where that, this is a, the, the female housing, I've got two females that work out of that one office. I wish I had a laser pointer on this, but basically they've got, at the main jail, they, usually there's at least two hundred and twenty inmates down there, okay? We've had to go to the extension with the other twenty because the state required us, we didn't have enough housing going. You all that's looked in those cells, you all know that there, you can barely even walk through the cell because there's nothing but, but boats and, and mats laying on the floor. That's all the way through there. They've got to do all the people that come into custody, it usually takes fifteen to twenty minutes to process somebody in. And they gotta bring all the bondsmen, people that come in the front. They also gotta take all the people to medical, they've gotta, they gotta do all their checks if somebody's on suicide watching. That's two people. Well, you all want me to do programs, okay? You all want me to bring volunteers in. Well, if I have somebody, them, them, one of those two females, if they're free, have to go in, get the ladies, who are usually church ladies, take them upstairs, sorry. But they have to take them upstairs to the chapel, you know, up the elevator, then go back down and they can move four inmates at a time. Like I think Jane at one time did some volunteer work in there. It's, it's, these, these girls are, are pushed to their limits, but I got two, okay? I'm asking for one more. And the numbers are there and you think, well, why is it so high? Well, you've got to times four on everything you do with shifts. I got four different shifts, I can't just, sorry Mayor.
Did you hear one?
Yeah.
Okay, oh yeah, that's perfect, I appreciate that. See you talk. And I do appreciate you coming over. But anyway, they, those two females are right there. They're having to go all the way back here to booking. And one of my captains took the time out to, to draw this out, out of the cab. So I, I'm telling you, we've got some brilliant people. But they have to go back here and, and this is on the second floor. You was right, I think this, this is worse than I can see. But anyway, I'm just asking for one more person. And I know that thirty-two members, a huge number. Sorry.
I think the middle one.
The middle one, okay. Anyway, there's, that's a female housing, that's a female housing, there, there. And of course, there's one upstairs. Okay. This is the unit three, that there's usually a hundred, at least a hundred inmates down there. This is where the most violent can go. Now, this was another glaring thing I seen. I, I was told I had a violent facility, you know, I, I, I didn't realize I did. Even with all the fights going on, I guess we're just accustomed to it. But we do have a lot of people that, that I'm gonna let medical talk to you about too, to answer some of your questions on that. Got a lot of orbital fractures from, and broken jaws that we're dealing with all the time. And from fights, you know, that we can't stop. But you put forty, fifty men in a sixteen-man cell, there's, at some point, and your air conditioner ain't working too good, it's hot, eventually they're gonna fight. We have a huge problem with them taking each other's food right now. It's hard to make sure they all get, get fed. But anyway, I got one officer down here, that's all I got. He can't do nothing, he can't open the door, he can't do anything unless that one rover I got comes down there. You starting to see a little better about what I'm up against? And so he just basically goes around and checks. These cells down here, that's the only cells I had to put these violent offenders that assault people. That's it. The average, and I, and I fact-checked this, I, I was told that with a population my big, I needed, I, I, with our size, we needed at least a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy segregation cells to separate the violent offenders, the mental health and everything else going on. And guys, the mental health people get brought to jail now, okay? They might go out, they might have all kinds of mental problems, they might go out and steal their neighbor's yard. When we get them, there's nothing to let, we, they shut Lake Shore down, we are the mental health providers now. And I think some of you got to see some of our clientele on that. It's a sad situation, they don't need to be there, but there's nothing I can do about it. I can't release anybody, I can't do anything. I don't arrest these people, nobody in the jail, we don't go out and arrest anybody. We, you know, we don't bring people in from the state and house them. There's usually, there's about a hundred and twenty-five state inmates right now. When they get, we usually ship out as many as the state allows, usually about thirty a month. But at the same time, there's another thirty getting sentenced, it's a revolving door. And we hadn't, we don't even have the time to track it right now with the current staff. But anyway, this is the, the jail extension. I know at the time it was designed, it was probably, you know, a great idea. But what it did was it separated, it made us two facilities, okay? So we house close to three hundred inmates up there all the time. I think it's two seventy-eight, two eighty today, it varies. But it should, it's, it's, two hundred and forty's a hundred percent. You shouldn't be a hundred percent on anything. I mean, if I, if you, if I'm just trying to operate at a hundred percent, that's, that's not very good. We have a lot of violence up here. I've got two officers back here, there's two hundred and seventy, there's a doorway right there, okay? There's no fence around this at all. Right there is an exit door, a lot of you that did the tour, you went out, you, you know, you seen what was there. You all have inherited this, I've inherited this, but it's my duty to, to show the public and show you all because it is a public safety risk and it's a, it's a huge risk for us, you know. So anyway, back here is where the females got moved from the main jail. There's about anywhere from fifteen to twenty up there. And this, and this control, there's a control room right there. I had to bring a female up there, that's, somebody's gotta be in there all the time, that's who opens and closes the door. There's one rover up there. So if she's gotta deal with something back here, he's gotta relieve her. And she can get out and, and he'll take care of whatever she's got to with the females. At the same time, there's just two officers back here. They can't go in and do anything about this unless, if there's a fight in the cells, they can't do anything unless another officer shows up. You know, that's just a safety thing for us. But there's four officers up here currently that we house as part of that seventeen. This is just more of a layout of the whole thing. And this is, this is what we're putting in for. That population control manager, I'll be honest with you guys, I, I need somebody that, and you can't hire, it's gotta be somebody that is knowledgeable, somebody that's got the ability to communicate with judges. I want to have somebody that can go take it, have the time on a case-by-case basis to go meet with the judges. You know, at, at the current time, if there's somebody that needs to get out for medical reasons, me or one of the captains or the health administrator will go, either to Bristol, to King's Court, or whatever. And it's usually a process that we're having to do it, we're doing other things, then we gotta do that. And tell them what's going on and try to get the inmate out if it's a medical health problem. But that's the only way we're allowed to let anybody out. The R, the RN position, I've got one RN. We run like, it's like a, well, there's, there's two, but the other one, all she does is do physicals that's required by the state. That's all she has time for, okay? Christie Frazier, she's the, she's got a lot of responsibility. It's most highly litigated area in corrections and this looks like hosting medical group up there most of the time. We've got, I just want from spot to spot there. But we, we're asking for four LPNs, currently we've got two LPNs on each shift. The problem with that is they, they medicate close to three hundred inmates a day. That means they gotta sign a Mars form, they gotta make sure they're giving the correct medications to the correct inmate. But if they're, if they're having to go up to the, the extension, then you got one that's down in unit three and you have something happen in, in one of the other housing units. Somebody cuts themselves with a razor, somebody coves out in booking, we have that all the time. They have to shut everything they're doing down and run back down there. But they're, and then they start back. And here, here's kind of how, I've, I've given an example of how it is to work at the Sullivan County Jail right now. It's like me, and I, I think I shared this with the mayor today, but it's like me bringing you to my house and telling you to paint my, my, a room in my house and then I pull you out when you're halfway done and I say, hey, I, I need you to start on my car here, change the oil on my car. Get the oil drained out and then you go over there and I, I pull you from that and have you mow my front yard. And then, and then you don't get half of that done, I call you back in the house to fix the drain. And then I say, hey, try to get that done before you leave and I leave. That's the frustration. These guys are having to, you know, they want us to charge inmate on inmate assaults. I've got new officers trying to charge people. They have to do the in-house charges and then they have to do the criminal charges. So I know the district attorney, attorney's office gets very frustrated with this because you got new officers trying to, you know, do stuff that we have a hard time helping them to do, you know, because everybody's so busy. The other, the four shift sergeants, the reason I, I asked for that was clear. Up there at the extension, there's no supervision whatsoever. I've got that corporal that we made staying booking, there's two, there's three people in booking right now. There's one that pretty much all they do is book and the other one releases. And like I said, they bring in four, close to forty a day. After that, there's a corporal. That corporal's responsible for every release. You all are well aware that it was a mistaken release that was pretty bad, it made the media. We're, we're trying to keep that from happening again. But other than that, the, that lieutenant, you know, is responsible for all the other paperwork. The sergeant runs from dildan to dildan, chasing the, you know, whatever problem. You got young officers there, the only people I've got with experience are the supervisors. And they're doing a great job, but they're run to death. You go down through there, the transportation, you know, I, I think I've identified that, the numbers are there. I'm just asking for two, you know. And granted, if, really if you did a staffing analysis, you would need more than this. I mean, it's, it, you know, if you, if you need five to operate a, a company twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a week, you don't ask for five, you're gonna have to have seven, at least. I know that much, you know. You can't do that because you got people that's gonna take vacations, they got sick time. So usually if anybody takes vacation at the sheriff's office, they've gotta call somebody in. I did clarify that, we've got twenty-one on each shift, but we average having nineteen at any given time because of attrition. You all seen the numbers, people leave. Well, somebody leaves, we can't hire in that position until their time is running out. If they're on, if they've got comp time, if they got vacation time, it might be two months. Well, then it takes another two months once we hire somebody for them to be ready to work by themselves. So at that point, right there, that's what, where I get that nineteen average. Well, I've gotta have seventeen there all the time just to meet these little needs or the requirements that I've got right now. And that ain't, this is just not enough. So if I got one at the hospital, it goes up to eighteen. If I got one in King's Court too, I got one in Bristol, one in King's Court, that's happened, then I've gotta call in everybody. If they're on vacation or something, we call in people off other shifts. I was asked, why do you have people working overtime all the time? Well, that kind of frustrates me because that's all I can do. I mean, y'all want me to go down to five, ten people? I can assure you that a disaster is coming if I do that. So that, that's why I'm asking for, for these officers. These four, they're, these four are spread out over four shifts, okay? I mean, honestly, I'd like to have more, but that's it. The booking is, is the very most needed position I got. I'm supposed to do classification, which I have a TCI finding on as it is because with overprading, we can't properly classify. I'm, I'm supposed to be classifying twenty-four, seven. But right now, I've got a girl that does it and a guy that does it Monday through Friday on day shift. And so I, I'm, there, you know, that's not getting taken care of. There's no way I can make the other two because it stretches the process, helps along, they don't get nobody booked in, okay? It usually takes about twenty-five to thirty minutes. And then you say, well, you, you know, how did I feel comfortable coming over here and asking you all? When I started looking at this, and I looked where everybody else were, was at, and I called these jail administrators from all these different counties and they told me what they had and then I told them what I had, they were shocked. And, you know, it, it's clear, you all have this chart in front of you. Sullivan County up there, we're a sixteen hundred and nineteen bed count and we're running nine hundred and forty inmates on average. We, I think it was nine twenty-two. Now, it hadn't dipped down below nine hundred all month. I don't know if it's going to, it might, we keep our fingers crossed, but I can't make that happen. I can't do these programs you guys are wanting me to do. If, if I'm, you know, some, there's been some, I think David Stanley has a wonderful program and if you're gonna do it at a school, y'all want me to, I'll have to call people, more people in to transport these inmates to these schools. I mean, you see where I'm at, I, I hope it's, it's kind of clear. There's, there's nothing more I can do than what I'm doing. And, you know, if, I, I can't explain it no better than that. So that, that. So, that, that concludes the PowerPoint. Feel free to ask any question you want to. I, I would like, one last thing. I've got, uh, I do, and I, she's very important to me. And she's probably getting close to her wits' end. She's been here a long time tonight. Martha Parker, she's a, a, a doctor we contract with. She saves the county a lot of money. Uh, and she's got, she's got a tremendous amount of liability. Would you like, does she have time, mayor, to address her concerns?
Sure, sure.
'Cause her concerns are very much my concern.
Be happy to hear from her. Mr. Parker, welcome.
I'm, uh, Martha Parker from the medical authority at the jail. I have been there for almost three years. And I guess, uh, this is the Lee's presentation that, three years ago, I would've probably not paid much attention to how bad we needed to jail in this area. But things have sorta changed, um, over that time. And I guess there's a couple of things that I wanted to mention. As when I started, um, there were probably six hundred and fifty, seven hundred inmates. And things, the pace was a lot different. And over the course of the last three years, um, things have become significantly more, um, violent. Uh, we see, uh, constant altercations. Uh, that means somebody needs stitches. Somebody has to go to the hospital to get a CT scan. Uh, we're blue in heads every day. You know, uh, in two thousand and eighteen, the first year I was there, uh, I don't think we had a single broken jaw or a single orbital fracture. Last year, uh, at one point, I counted and we had had like six broken jaws and three orbital fractures in a period of four months. Those are pretty serious things. Uh, any of those serious injuries are gonna be costing somebody money, a lot of money. And that's basically Sullivan County. Those aren't things we can obviously handle in the jail. Um, so, you know, that any altercation, any lack of staff, means that when they're not able to supervise, that people are getting hurt. Well, that has incrementally increased over time. The, the more crowded it becomes, the more injuries we see. In, in the more overcrowded it becomes, the more work there is on the nursing staff. Um, there are three, I mean, two nurses per shift, and they're medicating, as you said, around three hundred people per shift. Um, you know, and the hospital nurse is gonna medicate, probably her max is gonna be thirty people a day. They're medicating three hundred. One nurse is medicating three hundred people. Do you know what the error rate in that's gonna be? I mean, phenomenal, unbelievable error rates. Um, so, then again, you're increasing liability to the nurse, to the jail, to me, and to you, and to the county. So, I mean, you know, the liability is incrementally increasing as well. And, and, and Lee didn't ask me to come today. I asked him. And I'm not an employee of the county per se, like everyone else. I'm contracted, and I've been sitting here now for four and a half hours, like, my three minutes to say. But, um, it's that important, I think. And I think that, um, people don't realize that the intensity of what's going on. I get to visit it regularly and see that this place is gonna blow up. Um, and I wouldn't say that if it wasn't gonna happen, I promise. Uh, it's unsafe. It's unsafe for the inmates. It's unsafe for the officers. So, I guess, you know, the need for staff, for nursing staff in particular, I see desperately. They are overwhelmed. When I came there, they're drowning now. And, you know, it's very hard to criticize an error when you know that they're doing the best they can. Uh, and they're fighting every day to just get through what they have to do barely. And they're skimming the top. So, just keep in mind that, you know, he didn't tell you anything that's not true, and he didn't tell you that's weird, which is like... But, um, I did go recently and say, "Something's gotta happen." And I mean that wholeheartedly. Something has to happen. Uh, or it's gonna be big. It's gonna be bigger than anybody can dream, 'cause I don't think anybody really has an idea what really goes on in there till you get to spend some time there. So, does anybody have a question for me?
Question for the doctor. Don't believe we have. We've got, Mr. Shell had a question to...
I'm gonna say this before he says anything. The cost of not doing nothing at this point will be much higher than the cost of doing something. And I'm a conservative Republican. Always have been. I'm against tax raises. But I could also tell you that we might, nothing might not happen, but I could, you could also drive your car without insurance and you might not wreck. But if you do, if you do, and somebody gets injured, you'll pay for it for a long time. I'm, and, and I have the same fear as many of you do. I'm a county taxpayer, too. I don't want this. And I hate that we're in this situation. I hate that I've had to come over here and bring this to you. I really do. Uh, the mayor knows I'm really passionate about it. Uh, I think, yeah, I, I don't wanna fight with you all. I, I'm, I'm simply done at this point. I think that at this point, I have showed you all all I can. Feel free to come back over there. Uh, feel free to do whatever you want to at this point. I think I took care of my end. So, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, Lee, I wanna make sure that I understand your staffing request, uh, the basics first. You have three eight-hour shifts, is that correct?
Uh, four, uh, two twelve-hours shifts. I, I've got four shifts that work twelve hours. You know, you have to have, they, they, there's a seven-day break. It's much like the Eastman rotation. That's when we set it up, that's what it was.
Okay. And you're putting together the numbers that equal thirty-two in various skill sets.
Yeah, I tried to identify each one of those so you all, there'd be no confusion.
But that, I got the impression after seeing the briefing that that's based on your in-house analysis.
Yeah. Now, you can pay a hundred, uh, I, you know, I can become an expert and pay a hundred thousand dollars, I'll tell you. I, I will tell you this, guys. Uh, I've got a guy coming in, uh, uh, that's gonna do a staffing analysis just for me in April. But it won't be done till July or, or later. But I'm telling you, we're drowning right now, and...
Okay, I'm just trying to understand the numbers. So, you did an in-house staff analysis based on your current workforce, your average jail population.
Overtime.
The layout of, the physical layout.
Yes, sir.
Well, that influences, I, I understand that. I mean, intuitively, I could see we need more staff, but I don't know what the magic number is. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, well, the magic number is much higher than the one I asked for. And, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you this, guys. I'm not here for cutting deals. I'm not in politics. I've, I've shared that with some people. Uh, last night, I, you know, the only reason I come off the number I, I originally asked for was because I didn't wanna break the record of asking for employees. But this is common sense right here. This don't take a, a person very much intelligent to figure out. If you sit up there for a day, you can figure it out.
Is, is there any commonly accepted, uh, metric for, uh, maybe through the FBI or some national agency or something?
Absolutely, Pat. But I, I will be honest with you.
Yeah.
We don't wanna go down that road because you're, the, the number is gonna be significantly higher.
Okay, is it based on...
Mine's a conservative number, I promise you.
Uh, yeah, but I don't understand the number.
Yeah.
So, is it, is, is that metric based on X number inmates equals X number officers?
Yes, and there's other dynamics you gotta look into. Housing, the, the layout of the, we've got the absolute most intensive staff-designed building that you possibly could have. Most of them, you know, 'cause we, we're required to take people to the yard three times a week. We gotta move them all the way upstairs. The new generation jails, they've got the yards, you know, where you don't even have to come out of the tower. And the, and you don't have all your inmates out together. You can let eight out at a time, you know, because there's two-man cells. Most of you all have seen that, and, uh...
I'm assuming since our, our chief deputy was here, that, that your sheriff supports his request.
Yes, sir. We've talked to, you know, and here's the thing. Uh, the, the sheriff came in with a lot of, uh, ideas. He'd come with me, and, and we tried to make a lot of these things happen. But, you know, it didn't take us long to figure out. I done knew way before he did, but it didn't take him long to figure out. There's, there's not much of a, you know, you're fighting a system that, that's, that you can't win. Especially if you don't have enough troops to, to do. I mean, I think my staffing just explained to you, it's gonna be really hard for me to take people to these schools for the, for the rehab-type training that you all are wanting to do.
I, I just wanted to understand the numbers. Thank you.
I appreciate, hey, Pat, I, I love it when you ask.
Commissioner Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, mayor. Lee, you know, I, I went on the tour and everything, and, you know, I've, I've been a big supporter of the sheriff's department. All of us have. We gave you, you know, the, the SROs, the cars.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we approved, or we're going to. I think it's gonna be a problem, the additional five hundred thousand that's coming up to balance the budget that we're, we were talking about. You know, here's the problem. Everybody wants to be a gladiator until it's time to get in the arena. And everybody wants to be a conservative until it's time to hold on to a dollar.
Yeah, you're right. You're right.
And what I mean by that is this. This is something that doesn't need to be brought up right now. This needs to be in the upcoming budget. These knee-jerk reactions. You said you put this together tonight.
No, 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 Todd, that's...
Let me speak. Let me speak. You said you put this together tonight to bring it over here. Not too long ago, a resolution come over here about the telething. I made a couple of comments about it, upset some people over it. It got dropped. The new one come in, and it was one point one million instead of a hundred thousand.
What are you talking about?
I'm talking about the resolution for the teleconference thing that got Angie, Angie put up and withdrew. And then you told me you was gonna get one point one million out of revenue out of it.
Well, what that is right there?
Well, let me, let me finish. We can revisit that. What I'm saying is, it's knee-jerk reaction, knee-jerk reaction, knee-jerk reaction. We need to add these folks. I don't doubt you a bit, but it needs to be in the budget cycle. We, we, we don't have the money right now. If, if I go to Longhorn with five dollars in my pocket, I'm not getting a stay.
Well, let me just explain to you, Todd.
Give me just a minute. That, that's part of the problem. I'm hearing a lot of ayes from you. I'm not hearing a lot of whys. It's, "I do this. I want this. I want that." You know, we need to see something happening. We need to see the ankle bracelet thing's going in, and less people in there. You know, we need to see less people in the jail. You know, and we wanna help. We just don't have the money to help right now. Now, go ahead.
You gonna let me talk? Okay, good deal. Okay, number one, let's, let's, uh, let's, let's address the phone card. We've got a vendor right now called Secure. She was wanting us to go with the blind vendors. We getting nothing from them.
Stop right there. You're putting words in my mouth. I got a quote. You were the one saying I wanted to go with blind vendors. I never said that. I told Jeff, "Let me get you a quote." We stopped that. You were gonna accept it at a hundred thousand, but when you redid it, you told me it's gonna be one point one million. That's a great improvement.
No, that has nothing to do with that, Todd. That has something to do with total...
No, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Let, let, let me, let me butt in here.
Yes, sir.
I don't think that has anything to do with, with the resolution to burn up.
We can address that on the side. That's a whole other economy. That's fine. What was your other, your other question was a knee-jerk reaction. Well, this, this is no knee-jerk reaction. I, I clearly showed the numbers. If you wanna vote against it, Mr. Brownton, feel free. But let me tell you something. I've got a duty. I've got a duty when I recognize and see something, that I ask for it, you know? That, that I, I see a need, that I ask for it. I mean, if this is personal for you, I'm sorry. But I, I'm, I'm, I still have a duty to the men and women. I've got a duty to the citizens of this county. If I know or see something that there's a liability to, I have to bring it to the forefront. Now, if I didn't, and then we ended up getting sued in a federal lawsuit, everybody's gonna ask me why I did not. When they start hitting me for inadequate staffing, understaffing, you can Google all this. They're all over the internet. All kinds of cases going on right now. Then you guys would wanna know what I was doing, why I wasn't coming over here and notifying you. That's my only, uh, that's my only, uh, deal tonight.
I, I understand you're passionate about this. I get that. And it's not personal for me. What, what I'm trying to convey to you is this. People in the audience wanna see Restbridge High School built. And they will tell me, they do not care what it costs, as long as that school's built. They will tell you that. I get that same feeling from you. If you don't care what it costs, as long as you get the people in a new jail, that's not reasonable thinking. You know, we have a budget. We have to stay within. I don't think we've got a spare million and a half laying around. If we did, I would love to give it to you.
Todd, Todd, feel free to vote against all of it. It's, it's your choice. I'm, I'm just...
Once again, Lee...
It's my duty to notify. I speak for the men and women over there, and, and that's what I'm gonna do. And if you wanna vote against it, that, that's your choice. At the end of the day, I've got an obligation to, to state the facts.
Once again, you keep saying, "I have an obligation."
'Cause I do.
"We have an obligation. We're in this together. It's not the Lee Show. We're in this together." You're making it the Lee Show. It's not personal, brother. We're in this together. We want to help you what we can.
Todd, you're really confusing.
Let's, 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 let's...
I'm, I'm just representing. Let, let me qualify that, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll go away. But I, I'm just over here to represent it. I'm sorry if I say that. I, I'm talking for all of them. I got some phenomenal people. I'm not speaking for, I'm not saying it's gotta be done. This is what we've come mutually together with. And, uh, I'm not confused right now.
We got a couple more questions, Lee. Uh...
Okay.
Chris, we're out. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Chief, I, I know you don't have any control over who, how many people come into that jail. That's, that's decided on above you. The only other question I had was the one point five million down the daughter. Does, is, does that include benefits or do you...
Uh, the finance director, uh, Frank, he, he comes up with those when we ask for a position. So, that's, yes.
It's a estimate with benefits included?
Yeah, e- e- everything that they would need to work there. Like, we outfit everybody with.
Okay, appreciate it, Chief.
Then I'm gonna assume this is a legal, uh, a legal question. Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions. I did wanna speak on the resolution, though.
I usually don't dance from the chair. And, uh, I think all these members would take your counsel. I certainly do every day. Go ahead.
Uh, I wanted to, uh, speak in favor of, of the resolution. And I, I suppose to a certain extent, um, maybe, I don't wanna take credit for the resolution by any means. But I, I told, uh, Officer Carswell that I was tired of hearing about the complaints about the jail. Uh, that we needed solutions, that we needed a recommendation from the sheriff's department is what needed to be done. I, I, I was, in fact, probably rude with him. I told him, I said, "I'm tired of listening to the one and then the crown and the crown." I have spoke, I spoke out three years ago that we needed to be addressing the overcrowded problem in the jail. And that we are making progress, but those are long-term solutions. I told Officer Carswell, I said, "We need short-term solutions. We need something to address the problem we have today." Uh, and I, I don't know if that had anything to do with Officer Carswell coming over here today, but it could have. So, maybe, maybe I had something to do with that. But, uh, we do need some short, we do need to look at some short-term solutions. A long-term solution is being worked on, uh, but we need some short-term solutions. Um, these jail's officers have a, a, a very, very hard job. That's huge stress over there. They get cursed at. Uh, they talk about their wives. They spit on them. I mean, it's nasty stuff over there. Um, and that's just the work environment. Uh, they need help. Um, and that's the, the safety, not only the safety of the officers, but the safety of the inmates. I mean, that could be my son over there. Uh, hopefully. It won't be, but it could be. It could be my daughter. God forbid, it could be my daughter over there one of these days. Uh, I mean, you know, I'm not saying they need to have a TV and a nice place to sleep, but they definitely need to be safe. Um, we got some serious problems over there. And, and I'm just saying that based on twenty-four years as a county attorney. I'm not speaking as a professional. I don't know how many staff we need. But we do need some help over there. You know, I called, I think it was three years ago. I mean, this has been going on for three years. I called previous county attorney John McClellan and talked to him about it. And he said, to tell you, the commissioners, "You don't want federal court involved in this." We went through that once. Sullivan County built a jail because of the federal court. He said, "For me to tell you from him, you don't want that to happen again." You know, we have looked at ankle bracelets. We've looked at efforts to decrease the population. All those things have been looked at. Three years have gone by. Uh, you know, I've pursued different angles. I even pursued an, a, a, an angle to get some of these people out on OR bonds, but it, it just isn't gonna work. Today's environment is, is like a revolving door. They go out one and they come back in the next day. I mean, um, we have to do something about today. We can't just look at what we're gonna do two or three years from now. We've got to do something about today. How many officers? And I asked Officer Carswell, I said, "What, what do you, what, what do we need to do today?" And his answer was, "We need staff. We need staff. That's how you take care of the problem, the safety, the medical." Uh, that's how we take care of it, is staff. And so, in summary, I don't know how many officers they need. But apparently, according to Officer Carswell, and I listened to him... And so, uh, in summary, I don't know how many officers they need, but apparently according to Officer Carswell, and I listened to him, and I saw his stats, and they're pretty impressive. Uh, I think Salomon County needs to step up to the plate and address this problem in the short run, uh, before we're forced to do so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dan. Where's your star, you're recognized?
Um, Lee, how, um, are these people gonna be new hires, or are you just gonna move them around from inside the department?
No, ma'am, these are actually new positions, I'm, I'm gonna have to, uh, we'll, we'll have to recruit and hire these people.
Okay, and we had a list here of, of, um.
That, that's the job.
Job responsibilities?
That, that's for the, that main position, and that's something I, I think, you know, that, uh, we, I've talked to you, that's one of the things everybody's looking at now. Everybody's asking me to, you know, look at programs, to look, work with the courts. Well, I'll be honest with you, I, I need somebody with those type of qualifications that will follow, uh, job duties out. That's a population manager, that's something I've researched in across the country, it seems to be very popular as far as lowering populations. I, I currently, I wanna quit saying I now, Todd, so I don't know what to say, we, I'll say, we've been looking, and, and I do not mean I because I'm telling you, if Christie leaves, I'm, I'm leaving with her, and my two captains, we got some good people, I'm just qualified in that. But that's just for that one position. Uh, and, and that, I'm reaching out basically to recruit somebody in that will help us see what's going on. It, it's, it's so labor intensive and it's so reactive all the time, there's people in, there's people out. And I just want somebody that'll be able to go to Bristol, talk with Judge Lotterback, go, go to, uh, Judge Goodwin, go to Judge Tewey in Kingsport and other judges, and say, hey, on this particular person, you know, is this somebody that we can get out on an ankle bracelet, is this somebody we can get out on a lower bond? Uh, do we got, is, is there something we can do for these people that have never been to jail before they get arrested, that we can get them out quicker on bonds? Right, right now, Alicia, we're just reacting, and we're doing the best we, we can. And, uh, but I, I, I need somebody with those skill sets to, to do that, that job.
Who, who does this stuff right now?
Uh, you, you, feel free to go online, you'll find it everywhere, there's not, we're probably cutting edge as far as that, uh, I mean, if you don't, if you don't like that position, but I'm telling you, in our situation, uh, we're several years off, even when we break ground, uh, to, to get in this, uh, uh, get in a facility built. I don't, you know, I, I, we need some help right now as far as getting somebody to help us get these people out. And that's what that's for, you know? But you can, uh, well, I'll show you what I've researched and found, but that was just a li- list of job responsibilities.
Lady? Mr. George?
Thank you. I, I want to clarify what Randy's question was, he asked if this number included all benefits? And what I was asking, is this healthcare?
Yeah, right.
Unemployed, I mean, you know?
It does not, Randy, your question, no, it did not include benefits.
Oh.
I calculated this on, uh, the cost for salaries, one hundred per count, and then three hundred per contract services, as well as the four hundred supplies, and six hundred for, uh, the vehicles, police tools. So no, it did not include it, two, uh, two hundred benefits.
So this, what is not in this number is benefits in terms of, I mean, what, what else would we have to put in here to have true costs?
Benefits.
Can you get us that number to what?
About four hundred seventy-five thousand.
Another four hundred seventy-five thousand?
Yes. And I, and I calculated it.
They, they said that benefits included in this number?
No.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I didn't.
He may have, and that's why I came up here, I wanted to get that corrected. I thought that was communicated, uh, earlier, but, uh, uh, over there in office today, but it obviously wasn't, so I'm gonna get that clarified. Uh, all I calculated was the salaries, and, and at forty-four percent estimated benefits, it's gonna run about four seventy-five.
On, does, what about training also, training, outfits, is all of that in except for the benefits?
Yes, there ain't any benefits, that's what I was calculating.
So you're looking at about two point one million is where this number should be?
Right at two.
Right at two, you think is realistic?
Yes.
So you're thinking, if, if this went face value, we'd be looking at, at least a five cent tax increase?
Two million divided by three seventy or whatever, yeah.
Okay, in doing this, and this may be a question, I mean, this is employment in this department, so this is a maintenance of effort. So if we put this money in, this is something that the county has to do from now on, even if we design a jail that does not need this type of, I know we're gonna say anymore, but.
No, 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 I, can I, can I answer that? The, the good thing about it, we have the opportunity right now, and, uh, getting the, the, you know, the M B I in, getting the project manager in, uh, looking at this new generation, uh, type of jail, it doesn't take you know, you've got a, a guard unit over there, and they can let people out, so we may be able to go lower.
And that's what my question is, I, I mean, but maintenance of effort, once, if we, if I understand correctly, and this, I may not, so y'all, sorry, but with the Sheriff's Department, our maintenance of effort is based on employment pay, and once we meet a level, we always have to pay at least that level, whether you need those positions or not. Is that about what I'm saying?
The budget is submitted on an annual basis, so the, if it came to that point and you had, uh, X number more than you needed, then you could adjust the next fiscal year's budget. I mean, there's no crime in somewhere down the road if you don't need or, and, and, and handle it through attrition, uh, but, uh, the ability would be there to reduce it if it, if it grew to fifteen million, uh, one year, and then the next year after all this was built, of course, it's five years down the road, uh, you could submit a budget for fourteen million and.
So you don't have to maintain it, that's not maintenance of effort?
It's submitting the, it's submitting the annual budget, based on what you need.
I just thought there was levels you had to go with, once you established.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, um, in terms of, in, you know, I, I tour the jail, I, I'm embarrassed that Salomon County, two thousand nineteen, we have those condition, and, and you know, I'm probably more likely than my kids ended up than they dance kids, but, you know, I'm. But the, uh, I, you know, this, this is crazy, this is a third world country type thing that you're dealing with, and I understand your needs, and, and I personally am one that, that think, as a citizen in this community, if I have to pay more taxes to have a civilized, or won't be that much, but, you know, a, a jail that meets a certain level, it is what it is. It, it should've been taken care of by past commissions, it should've been looked at differently, and I'm not saying I'm good with five cents, but I'm just saying that I, I do, I totally agree you have a need. But in looking at this, when you say thirty-two people, I mean, you obviously can't hire these in the double, you know, and by the time you've gone around to so many, we'd be in a different budget cycle, looking at different things. Um, realistically, if we voted to give you a go ahead on some, how long will it take to get?
To fill the positions?
To fill this type of positions?
Well, uh, you know, the new bu- actually, we couldn't do nothing until July one, I'm saying the new budget year and everything. And just, uh, the way things are now, finding qualified employees, uh, who are, to fill every one of them, I mean, I'm guessing it could be October, it could be possibly sooner, I, I'm, I'm not.
It's really hard to say because just like with the SROs, we really weren't sure how long it would take, but we did a combination of, uh, bringing people in, uh, that were, um, certified officers, and so it's, just kinda guessing at how long we, would that have taken. We got the SROs in a little bit sooner than I think, and we won't be expected, so it's, it's a tough question to answer.
So, you know, you said this would be next budget, so you're not expecting this to start soon?
I mean, I'm talking about it, but, you know, I, the way I, I understand the way it works is, uh, I guess the next budget cycle is, I, I didn't, I don't know, I'll be honest with you, I don't understand the budget's part of it.
They could be approved next week, and we can start immediately. I assume, no, it doesn't have to wait till July one.
Oh, I was just asking, just the way y'all, the way that was answered, but this, if, if we could not do this amount right now, is there a way that if this, if we budgeted X number of dollars, I know you don't wanna make cuts, but.
The, the only thing about looking at that, uh, that, that's one position for shift, I mean, I would, I would have to kind of read, I, I, you know, you two don't get one, but you two, I, I don't know. I mean, if, I'll do whatever you all say, I mean, you guys are the boss on that. I just, I try to be, give a conservative number, and, and still yet address the, the housing issues that I have. And, you know, I mean, I can't fuss if you give me two people, but, uh, I, I, I was, you know, I've got a, I've got a share of my.
Oh, I understand, and I said, I, I appreciate it, and I just wanted to make sure I understand my numbers.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Stanton?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I went over there and I toured the jail many times, and I went the last time and watched some videos and stuff, and there's so many of us. And those films, I mean, they're disturbing, they're very disturbing. They're, the violence over there with the gangs and stuff, that is somebody's kid. That is somebody's dad or grandfather, that they're in a beat that they lots out of, and it is inhumane. I was on the executive committee last term, and we set in lawsuits that we settled. And we could have funded these officers and not had to go through all these lawsuits. And had a lot better outcome, I think, with these inmates, I, just like, I agree exactly with what Dan said. We have got to do something now, this is not something that we can wait till five years from now, that we get this jail built, to go out here and put these officers in the jail. I mean, one officer, one of the things that I've seen and witnessed on one of these videos, I mean, when you've got murderers in there, they don't care to sit and pull an officer in and beat the daylights out of them, you know, it's nothing off of their sack. And we've got to do something. We have more inmates that's been taken care of in this jail than Houston Valley, Indian Path, and Bristol all combined. Look how many nurses work at those, look how many we have here. And it's something that I'm glad that Lee has, because when he first told me the numbers, I said, if you don't mind, go back and rework them, see if you can come down more. And thank you all for doing all of the work that you do, I appreciate everything that y'all do over there. And, um, it's just, we've gotta do something, or we're gonna be sitting here in executive session and looking at more lawsuits than what we got, because it's bad. I mean, it is bad if you have not viewed those videos. And I'm sure that Officer Carswell will take you over there and let you see them. It's just, it's, it's a very disturbing situation over there in that jail. And you've got two officers over there with three, or two hundred and sixty-eight inmates, I mean, that's insane. I wouldn't want my kids working over there in that kind of, uh, conditions and stuff in a jail environment. And this isn't just somebody out here that broke that chair either, a lot of these people are, I mean, there are gangs, murderers and stuff, and they don't care. And this is something that I think that, you know, we need to seriously look at. And I appreciate, like I said again, thanks for all that y'all do over there, I know that it's tough, and.
It's really a testament to the job that they are doing, incredible.
Oh, yeah.
This has been going on for years, I mean, this is just not something that's happened, it's been going on for years.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Harper, you're recognized. Okay. I know that we are in the middle of budget hearings, and, uh, I just wanted to ask you a question on this figure out here that you brought on this resolution. Was that also requested through the budget?
No, sir.
Okay.
That budget was submitted back in January for next year, if that's what you're referring to.
Uh, okay, the other thing is, sometimes if we want to take care of something pretty quick, and I think you all have got, uh, a desperate situation, it does need to have something done, have you considered, uh, contracted services of hiring security, uh, that is already specialized in that type of training?
You know, I appreciate you asking that, Terry, uh, to my knowledge, I've never heard of that, uh, the state has requirements for anybody that works in the jail, they gotta go through basic jail school. Uh, the cost of that, probably for a, uh, somebody running a security company would be very high. You know, uh, I'm, I'm for, in some areas, that's been real beneficial for the county, so I, I understand you asking that. But I, I don't know as far as, uh, you know, we work twelve hour shifts, I, I, there, there are high times, but anymore, we have as much violence at three o'clock in the morning as we do when all the court stuff is going on early morning, so I can't get a good gauge on when the best time to bring somebody in part-time would be, but, you know, like I said, I'm willing to do whatever you all want to.
Well, I mean, I, I'm just trying to, uh, understand the necessity for the, you know, to do something that's pretty fast. And I believe you indicated that, uh, uh, you couldn't just go ahead and hire somebody and put them in there without, without being properly trained.
Yeah, it takes about two months, Terry.
Do what?
It takes about two months to get somebody trained once they're hired. The, I apologize for having to come this late, but like I said, we've, we've been working, uh, county attorney did, he put me on notice and sped, sped me up quite a bit. And once we identified it, and we could kinda justify it in our own minds as we look through everything, that, that's why we're late, and, and I apologize for that, and I, I don't know how the budgets with you all work, but I'm sure you'll let me know.
All right, thank you. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Shump.
This is the chief deputy goes, I'm looking at your jail comparison, uh, analysis, and what jumps out at me is, we have counties like, say, Ha- Hamilton and Montgomery, that are much larger than ours, yet our inmate population is almost double theirs. I mean, do we have a higher crime rate, or what is, this, this is the root problem?
You know, Pat, that's another, uh, that's another area that needs to be looked at, you know, but I'll be honest with you, I've been spending so much time running people through the jail, trying to, trying to show the, the situation we're in, trying to present this stuff. It is something that needs to be looked at, but you being a numbers man, you know that takes a lot of time. And, uh, really, that's why I asked for that population manager, just to see what's going on. Uh, now, in Hamilton County, I think you're probably looking at that, they've got a private prison down there that houses probably about eleven or twelve hundred more of their inmates.
Okay, that explains that.
Yeah, Knox County, that's the main facility, that's the one that's closest we sent, similar to us, they've got a total of three more facilities that are, you know, smaller. But that's the one that kinda operates like we do. And, uh, and, you know, that's just the shift workers, that's not the, the day shift administrate, administration people. I, I didn't even touch that area, guys, other than the population manager person and the, and the transportation. A lot of these companies, they, or, or counties, they have people that specialize in certain areas. I've got people that wear four different hats, you know, they, they get, they do this for a while, and they do this for a while, so there's nobody that's sitting down and can crunch the numbers. I, I wish, I wish I had that ability, but I'm not even asking for that at this time, other than the population manager.
I just can't understand why our numbers are so much higher in comparison to our population compared to other counties' populations.
You know, I've got the last couple, I can go back as far as you want me to, but I've got the last, for the whole state, and you can, you can look, and, uh, you being a numbers man, you could probably, uh, look at that and come up with a lot better ideal than I could, across the state.
Keep in mind our demographic, where we're at.
Well, it suggests that we have a, like, a drug, crime, gang network in our county or something, isn't it?
We got it, we do.
You know, after talking, and I, I'm probably ain't at liberty to say everything that's going on here, but we, we do, after talking, some of the stuff that I was told, I, I shook my head, and I did not believe it, I'll be honest with you. Even when I heard it from certain, you know, from, you know, from where I heard it from, until I actually started to experience it in the jail as we do these investigations, I thought, oh my gosh, it, it's true. And, uh, yeah, it's, uh, something that, you know, the city of Kingsport, uh, Bristol, all of us need to kinda join together. Guys, I'm reaching out to everybody I can that'll work with me to help solve this, uh, I'm, I'm doing my best, uh, might find somebody that can figure it out a lot quicker than me, but at this point in time, I'm giving you all I can, I can give you.
Commissioner Blalow?
Uh, well, first I would say that maybe instead of right now, hiring the thirty-two people that you're running, maybe just hire a project manager, and get them to come in and let, let them figure out the number of how many people we need. Uh, just, this is a suggestion, but then I'm also thinking about all the people that are out on the roads, and sometimes I, I know this is not good, but. but I see, see them talking to each other and not doing anything out there. Are some of those people, people that are trained that could come into the jail and do some of the work at the jail or...
So, you're saying are, are officers or...
I think some of them are sitting out there talking to each other at night, all that stuff and not doing anything. Maybe we could get some of those to come in and work at the jail.
Well, uh, you, you can take that up with, uh, I'll make sure that...
Yeah, maybe they won't give you tickets.
I'll make sure, uh, Chief Simcox comes and you can, uh, you can talk to him about that, that's his, his side.
Okay, but I just don't think you have to make it a chief, but maybe you're...
I sold it down, I sold it down.
If you don't, let, let me say this, I'm bringing you an urgent need that I needed, uh, a long time ago. If you want to wait for the study to get done, I will tell you, you know, Pat asked me about the, uh, the national average, it's one for ten. We've got nine hundred and some inmates, so every shift you should have one officer for every ten inmates. But we doing that, we as a county, I know we can't do that, I'm not asking for that, I don't even want to look at that. But I, I'm telling you we had an urgent need, I know what they're gonna say when they come back, uh, so...
Okay, but it's not just because you're scared the lawsuit gets on? I mean, isn't it...
I'm absolutely, I wouldn't be over here notifying you all if I was scared that was gonna...
No, but I'm hearing that the judges are also scared of lawsuits and that's why they're not putting ankle bracelets on any of them.
Have you researched any lawsuits, Commissioner?
About what?
Have you researched the lawsuits going on across the country?
No, I have not.
Okay, I, you, you can look at that, I, I assure you that it's, it's a very common theme among, uh, overpopulated, under, understaffed jails. So, uh, you can, you can do the math, I mean, I can drive without insurance too and I may not wreck, but if I do, I'm gonna pay for it for the rest of my life if somebody gets hurt. And that's the, the urgency I'm sharing with you.
Okay, and so you don't think a project manager prefers with help?
I, I think a project manager is very much needed, but, uh, by the time they get all that process done, I mean, do you want me to wait another year, is that what you're saying?
I'm not just saying we don't have the money and we paid all this money for cars and everything else. We bought a rental car.
If you want to do, listen, there's needs and the needs we come over here with was to keep, uh, the, the, the increase we needed. That's for food, I, I sure, we don't have employee, uh, swimming pools or, or whirlpools over there. That, those were where we had to fix HVAC, stoves going down, uh, laundry going down, we have to do that. I mean, if we don't, uh, you know, the Department of Justice will be in there. So, we're working our hind end off and it, you know, you're part of the funding, uh, body. If you, you don't think that, uh, that that's needed at this time, I'm not sure.
I didn't say I don't think so, I would just say being a project manager could come in and maybe, you know...
I, I believe that they're gonna be, uh, I know a lot of them and I, and I know most of the, I, I'm, I, I've researched it enough to know that I'm, I'm under the ballpark right now. But we can wait on that, it's, I mean, I'm not gonna recommend it, but if, if, I, I'm at your mercy. I mean, I'll do whatever you, you all say. I'll keep working regardless of what happens.
But you, which, uh, at least, Mr. George?
Um, you mentioned a contractor to transport the, the...
If, if they're, if it's past the east of the Miss... We have to pay them, if, if it's like somebody in California, believe it or not, we have to go, uh, we use a contract service and we have to pay them, it's a pretty penny. But that's why it's cheaper for us, if we can get them on this side of east of the Mississippi River, we'll go get them ourselves. But they don't do this stuff for cheap, I know.
I mean, obviously, um, but, um, you said forty-one had resigned or been terminated?
Those are, uh, training, my, uh, training lieutenant and one prior to that has been tracking that record for several years back and I, uh, he may have started in twenty sixteen, so everybody coming in and leaving, he has a record and that's where I've got those numbers from.
So, those people haven't been, um, you haven't replaced those people?
Uh, you, yet, when somebody quits, they get replaced, that's a slot, we fill the slots. You know, I mean, we, we'd have to or we wouldn't have nobody.
Yeah, that's true. It's late, I can't help it.
Commissioner George?
Uh, Frankie, one of the budget meetings, you made a statement that kind of cut me off guard. It's approximately sixty percent of the population is waiting sentencing. That's, that is huge, sixty percent. And Mayor, I talked to the mayor about it. We're the only country, and you mentioned this to start with, we're the only county in the United States, in the United States that has three courthouses.
Not the only county, we're in the minority that, that operates this.
No, we are the only county in the United States that has three courthouses. And we are transporting... Courts, well, courthouses that we...
I, I know where you're going with this, Sam, I'm sorry.
No, no, you, just wait till people finish.
If you don't care, sorry.
Uh, I'm, I don't want to get tired, but, uh... Where I'm going is, when we look at this construction and we've got a contract out, I think we need to look and have to talk to other people. We need one courthouse and one jail in this county for our size and we need to bring the courts all to here. We've got an empty courtroom, we may be able to bring somebody in who's retired judge to do part-time right now. We've got an empty courtroom over there. And we could start processing some of these people.
I understand what you're saying.
No, no, I'm, I'm...
Now, my response to this resolution, let me, let me finish, okay? Let's stay on this resolution, what's stated on the resolution, stay on the subject.
I'm going, I'm going there, I'm going there, Mayor. I under, I went over and toured and I understand and see the need and that's immediate, I understand that. But we also, we got to start looking at, and we, we appropriated two hundred and twenty-five thousand to start that process. But in that process, we need to look at, and if we can help reduce some of this immediately to help you, I'm all for anything we can do.
I, I'm for that too and it doesn't just affect the, the judges and judicial system, it's the district attorney's office. What has happened at Sullivan County's crime rate has grown. These services have not grown with personnel with them. So, the DA's office is just as strapped as we are, the judges are just, and the clerk's office, so it, it's a big monster and we do, we all need to work together. I think, uh, when the MBI comes in, we'll have, uh, groups that will, that are gonna look specifically at that. I wish I could tell you the, uh, a silver bullet to fix all that. And I don't want the people in Kingsport to be mad at me or Bristol, because I know everybody, the way we're set up, we've been that way a long time and that's gonna be a tough battle to win out there.
Thank you, we've got, uh, Commissioner Cross, you're, you're recognized.
I don't have a question for you, I just have a statement. I know probably a majority of you all went and visited the jail, I'm sure everyone of you here. Uh, I would request, and I'm sure he will entertain the request, that you go after nine P.M. And then see if you think there's a need. No, I'm just saying how much of a need that there is. A few of us went about ten o'clock at night when things are stirring and it was, it was unbelievable.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Cross, bye.
Thank you, Mayor. Lee, I appreciate everything you do and I know how hard you all work and I'm like Angie, I got to see the videos. Also got to see the picture of the officer that had his whole face, just scratched all the faces. We gotta do something, we got to do something. And if it takes getting, we need to cut other, other programs and help these officers out. And they do work hard. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that looks like that cleared the board, uh, any, uh, Mr. Butler, you want to address anything before we move on?
No, I'm good with you, but...
Chief, thank you for coming over.
Thank you all.
Frank, thank you. And you have, uh, been sitting for another two hours and I think I need to go shave. So, let's take a, let's take a ten-minute break and let's try to get back here by eleven, eleven twenty-five.